I think you have to go home. Eugene, the streetlights are on, you have to go home.
All right, so.
Hope we got out.
Okay. Please note that Alderman Eugene Wesley can't tell time and is late, but he's here. One demerit, okay. Are we ready to start? So, before we, before we jump into this could be few hour project, they just had a few comments to make.
Fifteen.
Fifteen tops. Folks, there are, and I know Brad will talk about this, but there are topics in here that probably will not warrant us having multiple debates. This won't be fifteen minutes, this won't be fifteen hours, but happy medium where we'll ask questions. There is a dedicated meeting or discussion set up, as Jeff noted in an email to us all regarding the Public Works Building, as well as the Park District proposal, both which essentially are unfunded, so that makes a lot of sense. So, I will take questions throughout, but I really want to make sure that we push this along as diligently as possible. So I'm going to pass it off to Brad, so you could give your introduction and overview, and then I'll dive in after you.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. As stated, we're here discussing the draft capital improvement plan from two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty-three. As we've done in the past few years, the first six pages or so are the budget message, which by and large is very similar to the years previous. We obviously update the funding sources and total numbers as we go through, specifically on page six of the document. You can see this year, the five-year CIP in the funded section is around eighteen point five-two million, a little lower than in previous years. But if you go to the next page, on page seven, you'll see that this number went from around twenty million last year, I believe, to just under fifty-seven million in the unfunded section. So, you know, definitely some conversations to be had. And just, you know, by way of explanation, you will not see the Park District page on here, as we were having the conversation tonight, and didn't want to make any assumptions about dedication and/or monetary pledge amounts. We didn't want to make it seem like we were making assumptions or planning anyone's life for anybody. So, we did leave that out on purpose, just again, not knowing the total outcome of tonight's meeting, the previous agenda item. So going forward to page ten, again, this is the recap. That was very similar to what was on page six, the eighteen point five million dollar total in the lower right-hand corner there. You can see over the five years, transportation's just under six point three. Non-transportation is things that, you know, aren't related to roadways and generally speaking, mobility. That's just under eight million over the five years, and then water and sewer, we have pared that back a decent amount. You may recall when we had the water rate conversation in December, we were going to have to make some, some cuts to stabilize that fund, and so that's reflected in the numbers this year for the Water Fund CIP. Going on to the next page, to page eleven, is the cash flows. So you'll see in the general capital projects fund, which when we get the operating budgets fund forty-one, projecting to end fiscal year nineteen, which is the upcoming fiscal year. As presented here, it's nine hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars. Based upon the change orders that were approved earlier tonight, that number has magically now jumped up to nine hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars. So that'll be updated and reflected in the final version of this. And at the end of the five years, as presented, looking at a surplus of about six point eight million dollars. Now, you may recall the fifty-plus million in unfunded projects, along with the Park District project. So anything that would be pulled from the unfunded or that may come up over the next few years that goes into the funded section would adjust and augment these numbers accordingly. So, just to keep that in mind.
Now through the new budget being passed, correct?
Correct.
Yeah.
Yeah, so you know, anything you would pull into, you know, fiscal nineteen, if there was a project that wanted to get pulled in, you'd obviously take that nine fifty-five and then reduce that by the amount of that project for available funding for the remainder of that year. Just below that's the water fund. Again, speaking of kind of dialing that back, in previous years, number of years, we had one point eight million in water capital. Last couple of years, we dialed it back to one point five to help stabilize it. In addition to the rate increase, the other offset that we did, we also moved a couple of projects off and was able to reduce that to only a quarter million this year, taking advantage of remaining cash to help stabilize the, the water fund a little bit more to hopefully, you know, moderate future increases as best we could over the next few years, you know, until, until it kind of, the ships get righted, as it were, on that one, so. And with that, that's all I have on the intro section, but then we're, as in previous years, we have the summary of each section. So it's the transportation section, and there's listed the six projects that are programmed currently into next year's CIP. One other point that Chairman Messina alluded to, some of these projects, not necessarily the transportation section, but other section don't have anything until, say, fiscal twenty-one, fiscal twenty-two. Don't necessarily need to spend a huge amount of time on those, because really what we're trying to get at is what we want to be programmed into the fiscal nineteen budget that we then put into the operating budget. So, we like to focus on nineteen. There's a couple instances where there's engineering that rolls over into the next year, so we just need to be cognizant of that. But really, we're just trying to focus by and large on nineteen for the most part.
So I know we have a question, but just to reiterate, if it's not in fiscal year nineteen, I'm sorry, but I'm not going to entertain multiple questions on it. It's just for line of sight for future planning. Yeah, go ahead, Alderman Eugene Wesley.
Nine hundred thousand for Wooddale and Irving Park Road Improvement, that's two thousand nineteen, right?
Correct.
So what is that for?
Sure, so that is, effectively, it's the anticipation of the final invoice from IDOT. They've only sent us the eighty percent invoice. We've been told they're going to send us a ninety percent and then a hundred percent invoice. So we know based upon where the bids came in and what's been spent and funded so far, that our max exposure is still around one point three million, give or take. We're expecting to spend another four hundred thousand on this this year and nine hundred next year. So there's no new construction, it's just the closeout of the project and waiting on the invoice from IDOT once they finish their punch list stuff and close the project out.
Which I know we'll talk about later in the CIP, correct? So. Yeah, page is coming up, so we can talk further.
Oh, that's fine, that's fine, I got more questions on that.
Perfect. Anybody else before we dive in? All right, so as mentioned, we're going to go page by page, we're going to start with page fourteen. Are there any questions on page fourteen?
No.
Great. We'll move on to page fifteen, which talks about the citywide stormwater master plan. I will just make one note, and discussing this with Brad, you'll see in fiscal years twenty through twenty-three, the fifty thousand that's allocated, that's simply placeholder, correct, Finance Director?
Yeah, correct. We put that in there, so the project that's in there this year, the Squaw Creek project, is one that, I know we've talked about a number of times in combination with the ComEd, the Ward Three, Ward Two project, but the Squaw Creek project needs to happen regardless of the status of that ComEd project, so that's why that's programmed in here. And then once the determination on the ComEd project has been made, then that will kind of determine what future stormwater projects are there. So that money's in there as placeholder for just some future engineering, based upon what happens with the ComEd and then other future projects that come up.
Okay, Mayor, you have a question?
Yeah, I didn't get a chance to ask Matt, but as we do this, Squaw Creek, I know this is one part of that big ComEd project. Do we get any extra retention? I know it's not going to be huge difference, right? I mean, are we sizing this? This is the wall that's kind of falling and whatnot, right? There's not going to be any increased capacity, right? Pretty much replacing what we've got.
Jeff, what?
I believe the intent was to make sure it functions efficiently again, which would increase.
Yeah, it's not going to be.
Compared to what it is now.
Right.
So, but like Brad was saying, this plays into the bigger ComEd project, and this was budgeted for already, so. And we'll soon know the numbers for the ComEd stuff, so.
Follow-up, Mayor?
I would just, if there's some piping involved here, if we're going from like a eighteen inch, twenty-four inch, thirty-six inch type of deal or something, that's all.
Go ahead, Brad.
Yeah, those, those types of details I'd have to.
Yeah, I should ask Matt.
Any other questions on this project page or on this plan? Okay, Alderman Woods?
On the Squaw Creek project, I think part of this, and I brought it up before, because this flows through and goes to Dalewood, and what I was trying to do before was to tie in, that's where the sidewalk issue is, which keeps getting expanded bigger than it really is. But if we could scale that back to what it should be, which is only the distance of about four houses and include it in this, I think that we could save money.
Correct.
Think it's programmed in.
It's another sheet, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah, so Dale Project's another sheet, Dalewood Sidewalk Project is another work sheet.
Right, so I think we have it in there for like three hundred thousand? I, I don't see any reason that that should be over like a hundred thousand.
Jeff?
Yeah, we were planning on syncing it up, coordinating with this project.
Okay.
But if we're scaling it back, then we can sync it up all in one year. We were coordinating so it flowed together in subsequent years. But if we can talk with Robinson and perhaps scale it back like you're suggesting, then maybe we can.
There was talk, there was talk to them.
The project sheet's coming up, it would be the next fiscal year.
Well, you were talking as well that Dalewood might get displaced, right? Or moved a little bit, so we didn't want to put this, I know that is a future one, so we won't spend time, but go ahead, Brad.
Yeah, sure. So yeah, so the concern that some of the public works had in looking at it was that if there was some easements or whatever, they basically didn't want to do the work twice, didn't want to do the Squaw Creek and then, you know, didn't want to have to do it twice.
Right.
Or do, or do, or do the sidewalk first if Squaw Creek got held up by the Corps or something like that, and then it got tore up or something like that. So, to your point, and the project originally started at six hundred thousand, so now it's down to three hundred, so it's trending downward.
Right.
But I mean, to your point, if, you know, and again, you know, will and intend of the committee and the council, I mean, you know, if, if, we could certainly, I think, to the manager's point, before the, the final operating budget, we could certainly ask Robinson if there'll be some, some project synergies to do them at the same time and, and bring that back. We could, we certainly look into that.
Follow-up question?
Yeah, just to paraphrase that, so those should be linked, and for the reasons that you just said, it only makes sense. Some of that stuff's going to get disrupted anyway, and it's really only those four houses right there. So, that amount that we have in two thousand twenty's budget can really be pared down probably by sixty percent and put into this.
Jeff, go ahead.
Yeah, we, we have a meeting with Robinson to talk a little bit about the Squaw Creek thing, so we'll bring the Dalewood thing up, and then we'll probably have some revised numbers, which would eventually obviously be lower, so. And then we'll bring it all into one year, if Robinson agrees.
Okay, any questions about the plan? Alderman Eugene Wesley?
So, the Squaw, is six hundred thousand for that project?
No, incorrect. Go ahead, Brad.
But six aren't for construction?
Yeah.
That is, right, but is that, is that just for replacing that? The canyon walls, canyon with that?
Brad?
So, the six hundred thousand was based upon kind of reverse engineering of the design contract, based upon what the assumptive ratio of the design contract to the construction project is. So it would be the head walls, and I believe they were going to do some dredging of the pipes, cleaning up the pipes, and replacing anything if they were rusting out, opening that up. There was some money built in there for easements, I believe, if they had to buy any easements, things of that nature, so. But it hasn't been admitted yet, this is an estimate.
Any questions, any other questions on the Squaw Creek project or any of the other plans in that project? All right, we'll move on to sixteen, which is the list of stormwater projects. Any questions? Okay, I do, I do have one for you, Brad, I think you and I talked about this. Area eight, Aspen, Central, Ethel, Edgewood, and Detention Basins. I think we've brought up the resident before, but there is a parcel of land that is up for sale on Aspen that's actually pretty much in the forest preserve there. I was hoping to see, I think it's up for by one fifty or something, trying to see if that, if we could, the city could consider acquiring that property, essentially as a way to maybe be a detention or to add some type of that detention in any way.
You have a question?
Go ahead, Alderman Roy Wesley.
The property that you're talking is a joint property to the forest preserve?
Correct. It can't be built on.
Well, I understand that. Just be careful that you can't drain any water into the forest preserve on those properties.
Right.
Yeah, I can, I can talk about that with Brad. I think we spoke a little bit about that, that the, the property would be hard to develop for residential use because of the restrictions involved in the trees and whatnot. I think we may already have the answer in a stormwater study that Baxter and Woodman did. Maybe we go back and we look at that and see if that was a possibility. I know originally what we were talking about doing over there was in the seven figures.
The bigger project.
Yeah, the bigger project, so we'll have to go back and we'd have to get more information on that one.
Alderman Eugene Wesley, you have something?
I think that bigger project we talked about, that it was something with the forest preserve, and the forest preserve told us that we couldn't do it, so.
So it sounds like we'll go back, it sounds like Jeff will go back and do some, some research, is that okay, Jeff?
Yeah, and then I'll, I'll get you guys the information on that specific area eight.
Eight. Alderman Catalina?
Yeah, the, the unfunded ComEd water project, any timeline on that or an answer?
Jeff?
We just recently, pardon, see, and what's the bills or how is that working with the invoicing for the, the ComEd and the engineering? We had to, we had to give. Those were Potter. There should be an update within the next few weeks. I know Mark Wasnowski with Robinson was working with Cynthia from ComEd. I know both departments were kind of like reviewing back and forth. Robinson's pretty much almost engineered the whole thing at this point, based on ComEd input. We spent a lot of money on that. I've said it before, I don't believe they're going to tell us no, so we've advanced pretty far in engineering. I don't have a, an answer other than that right now. Thanks.
Any, any follow-ups?
No.
Alderman Jacob?
Going back to this area eight Aspen, I know a few years ago was scheduled to be done, and then we decided not to do it because the cost per, I think there's two or three homes there, the cost per house was too much. So, I just want to know when we find the ComEd project out, I'd like to know how many residents are actually affected by that flooding there. I'm not really sure to the extent of that, so you maybe give me an answer on that from the engineers, please?
Alderman Jacob, are you asking for how many residents would be affected by the ComEd project or the Aspen Street?
I'm, I'm wondering how many homes there are actually affected by the flooding, I don't know offhand.
Okay, go ahead, Jeff.
Yeah, I, I can try to get a number, I will tell you that it's astronomically higher. So, I don't have an exact number, though.
All right, if there's no other questions, we're going to move on. Good? Okay, page seventeen, is there any questions? Great. Eight. Alderman Roy Wesley, you have a question?
I don't have a question, but for the people at home, why don't you say what it is, so they, when they listen at home, they know what page we're talking about?
Sure.
You know, for what?
Sure.
Like rear, rear yard drainage program.
Thanks, thanks Producer Wesley, appreciate that.
Oh, you're, you're good today.
So page eighteen, street resurfacing and sidewalk replacement. Are there any questions on this page? Okay, we'll move on to page nineteen. This is a list of streets to be resurfaced. Any questions? Okay. Question? Sorry? So just, one thing, oh, do you have a question, Alderman Eugene Wesley?
Yeah, I do, I know you don't want to talk about two thousand twenty, I understand that. All right, my question is, the, the rating on, and, and Edgewood and Stonem and Almhurst is at thirty-seven. So why would we not, if we having such a big savings, why would we not move that street up to two thousand nineteen? That street's already at thirty-seven percent rating.
Yeah, and just, just to clarify, you, you can ask questions, just want to minimize questions.
Well, I'm, I'm the same.
Sure, so go ahead, Brad.
Really, it's geography, because the other two streets in that year, if I'm not mistaken, are in a similar location, I believe. Just kind of, just east of here, where the other projects, Central notwithstanding, I mean, Cedar, Sunnyside, Division, those are, Division, Louise, those are all located together. So, there is some savings to be had by geographically locating the streets closer together, you know, from a mobilization standpoint.
Any follow-up questions? Okay, Mayor, go ahead.
I do have a question. So, so many streets, the thirties and forties, we're strictly doing resurfacing, this isn't. I thought when it went down that low, that the street was pretty much.
Shut.
Shut, and we did a little more than just a repaving.
Reconstruction.
Right, or at least the binder, also doing the binder. Because I just want to make sure, as we're redoing these streets, you know, especially these that are thirty-sevens and forty-fours and forty-eights, when we take off the top, I know I've been, I've asked this a few times, we check, we make sure it's, the base is solid and all that stuff. Because once you resurface it, honestly, if the base is garbage, within three years, it's going to start deteriorating again, just like Route eighty-three as you get on two ninety east, same potholes that were there four years ago when, before they resurfaced, they're right back where the same spot.
Go ahead, Brad.
Yeah, and I'd have to defer to Mr. Rubach on kind of what the scoring is and what, what that involves at that point, so.
Yeah, typically when we do any resurfacing, we go ahead and check that binder and then repair any areas that's necessary. If there's severe cracking or if that binder is really bad, then we go down to the base and replace bases necessary.
Mayor?
Yeah, but are we, how do we test, I mean, are we eyeballing it or we got a, some type of, what do they call it, a PERC test or something?
There's a pavement scoring system that the engineers use, and typically it's based on cracking, so as the cracking gets more severe, that's usually indications that there's base issues.
Mayor, go ahead.
I know we're going to talk about this future meeting item on how we're going to handle our streets and whatnot, making sure they get done right, because, and we haven't gotten this, I don't know why the word eludes me right now. Our, our criteria of doing roads and whatnot, because, I mean, we did the Royal Oaks project, and that was, and a third of it got repatched, I mean, we don't want to do this stuff. I want to make sure that our criteria is better than what IDOT used on eighty-three over there four years ago, they got the same problem, and they've already patched it three times, I can tell you, and same holes keep coming up, so. I just want to make sure, I know that meeting hasn't come yet, but.
Jeff, is there something you can talk to Ken offline about this?
I think you, the engineering standards, that's forthcoming in the next, I think, sixty days. It's either in, in February or, yeah, I think it's in February.
Great. Alderman Sizmarzki? Good, I'm sorry.
I know we've talked about these projects before, and I know for a fact that we talked about flip-flopping twenty for twenty, twenty for nineteen because of the conditions of Central or Commercial being the main thoroughfare, and now that they just finished Wooddale Road. It hasn't, Commercial hasn't been touched in a long time, and I know we, Alderman Wesley was sitting there at the same time, but we did talk about flipping these two to do Commercial and all those first, and then put nineteen to twenty spot. You even said that it wasn't, that linear footing wasn't that different, we could just flip it.
Go ahead, Brad.
Yeah, I have to pull out last year's and look, part of, hate to say what happened, but, I mean, part of it was, was that we were applying for grants for Central and Division through the FAU route, through, was it through DMMC, I think, and, and so, the SDP funds, and so that didn't come through. And so, we had to unfortunately make a decision from a budgetary standpoint to kind of pull those apart a little bit. Because in the past, if you look at last year's, yeah, it was a, a much more aggressive program in previous years, but not getting that grant funding and then wanting to leave some flexibility in the budgeting for, for projects to be added or moved around a little bit. Now, that being said, I don't believe that's gone out to bid yet, I mean, so, you know, there's, you know, want to do something like that, I mean, we probably certainly entertain that, but that's why that's kind of moved around a little bit, was the grant funding didn't come through, so we had to, from a budgetary standpoint, kind of pull that apart a little bit.
Any follow-up questions? Okay. Alderman Eugene Wesley?
I have a follow-up.
Follow-up to?
Several years ago, we talked about doing the streets that are on the agenda for two thousand nineteen, but we also talked about up here at the council level that we do one or two streets in two thousand twenty, at least to go out for engineering for it. Due to the fact is if the cost comes down lower, we could bump those two streets up, or whatever street, one street, whatever, bump it up, we saved as much money on this, we could bump this street off, then bring everything down even lower. So whatever happened to that, that we talked about, Mayor, I believe we talked about this, be ahead of the ballgame on engineering ahead. So why aren't we doing that? Because this, I'll tell you one thing, if these streets two thousand nineteen comes in under budget, I'm going to come back and tell you, or ask you, ask the city council, go after the next street, and you guys are going to tell me, well, now we got to wait a year because we got to go out for engineering. I thought we talked about going ahead of the ballgame, engineer all the streets that are being done in two thousand nineteen, and at least engineer the next street that's in the worst shape in two thousand twenty, in case a bid coming lower. What happened to that? Mayor, you remember that conversation?
Do you guys have a response for that, or should we get the mayor? Go ahead, Mayor.
I think our goal was to, so let's say two thousand nineteen, we're doing these streets, but in two thousand nineteen, we're also engineering or whatever, twenty twenty, so we're always, we have something in the hopper, is what we had discussed. I don't know if we ever took an absolute vote on that, but I know we talked about it.
Thought we did.
Because we always want to have one ready to go, shovel ready, as, as we say.
Go ahead, Brad.
That, that's what you're talking about.
Yeah, I mean, I have to check with Matt on, you know, the final determination on it, but I know a number of years ago, we weren't even engineering the projects until May or June, which kind of put us behind the eight ball. So now we're designing the projects in, you know, December, January, February, getting, getting ahead of kind of the construction season curve. And so we pushed the, the design, a lot of the projects, back six months for all of them, but I don't believe we, well, historically, had ever designed two at one time, which is kind of what you're alluding to. And I know what you're saying, but ultimately we'd be designing two projects at once, just waiting for, to see if bids were coming lower.
You have a follow-up, Alderman Wesley?
Yeah, all I'm asking is that we take the next street in two thousand twenty, whatever it may be, I don't care which street it is, that we go out for design, because if this comes down lower, if the bids come back lower, and we've been low, I mean, our bid's been coming back pretty low. If we could bump another street in two thousand nineteen, well, I think it's a smart move for our city council to bump that two thousand twenty street up to two thousand nineteen. But the other hand is, I believe we did that in some Royal Oaks, that Royal Oaks was supposed to be a two-year project, the bids came in fair, so we went ahead and funded the second phase and did all in one lump sum in one year. That's what I'm trying to say here is that we already know what two thousand nineteen may cost us with the road projects that you guys budgeted for, for two thousand nineteen. Well, go back and sign out on how much the next street in, in two thousand twenty, two thousand, what it may cost us.
So just a quick question before, before you guys comment, if we do that, and we spend the money to do that, projects come in as they're supposed to for fiscal year nineteen, is it just pretty much we wasted money on a study? Or could, could those be, I know costs go up, so. Jeff first, then the Mayor.
Can I answer your question first? I don't think it's a waste of money, the engineering's not going to change that much, it's basically going to stay the same.
The materials is the part, okay.
I would say that typically, Alderman Wesley's correct, we have been coming under budget, but the council. but the council hasn't had a problem finding a project when we come under budget to then spend the money on another project we want to do. So it's like, that's another project that we can add, but what I'm saying is we never have a problem finding projects to spend money on.
So for the sake of simplicity, we'll take the mayor's comment, but needless to say, if we end up seeing these projects coming in less, we anticipate somebody will bring those other projects budgeted for fiscal year twenty up earlier?
If we want the policy to be where we'll design the next year officially, then just tell us tonight, and that's what we'll do.
Okay, well, we don't have a motion yet, so, Mayor, go ahead.
So basically, to do that, we'd have to take the design, the fifty thousand for the 2020, and just move that up, and maybe the twenty-five hundred for the material testing. So the fifty-two-five, move that to this fiscal year 2019, then we would be one year ahead on resurfacing as far as design. The design is going to be the design, whether it's go out for bid this year or next year. So that would be the motion, if we're going to move this. If you want to move forward with something like that, you'd have to motion the fifty-two-five.
I'll make, I'll make the motion to fifty-two-five to go up for design of the next street in two thousand...
Is there a second?
Twenty.
Have a second, okay. Alderman Woods?
Yeah, maybe somebody can refresh my memory of why we need to engineer a street, have a road grinder go down the street, grind off two inches, and have another machine go down the street and put down two inches. Why do we got to spend fifty thousand in engineering to do that?
That's a shadow of the law.
Yeah, I'm not an engineer, and I know you're making it sound real easy, and it is relatively easy, but you still need to engineer it. It's not an in-depth engineering, but we can't just go out there and get the machine out there and grind and overlay.
All right, any, okay, any other comments before we move on? Alderman Jacob?
Just in common to Alderman Woods, I mean, if we wanted to, could we? Or is that a state requirement that we have to have the engineer do that?
I mean, I guess I could defer to Mr. Rubach for a little more finite detail, but, I mean, I'm going to guess the contractor would want something a little more than start here, end here, go. You know, I mean, I guess it's ultimately what they do, but I'm guessing that they, if we're not going through MFT, then it doesn't have to go through their plans. But if it is, then it does, yeah. So, like I said, I have to defer to Mr. Rubach for a little more finite detail, but I guess that I'm guessing from a quantity standpoint and a mobilization standpoint, they'd want a little more than that, but again, I'm not an engineer either.
Go ahead, Ken.
Yeah, as Brad kind of alluded to, and Jeff kind of alluded to, there is a little more to it. You've got drainage issues, and we run into utility conflicts. I don't know if Matt or I have the expertise to go out there and say, yes, we need to pitch this more, yes, this utility needs to be moved. There's a lot on the back end that's not seen that the engineers do. And a lot of that, to their credit, you never see, because it's, you know, taken care of before we ever go out in the field. So there's a lot of design issues when we get out there, if we encounter a problem, if Matt or I have to figure out what to do with it, it might delay projects. And some of this stuff is merely out of our scope of expertise.
Right. Can't we just have our city engineer run out there and look at it if you need them?
We don't have a city engineer, per se.
Well, but we do. We do. We pay a guy. So we got a guy that can run out, right?
We still, they're not our employee, though, we still have to pay them.
Right, no, I'm not saying that we don't have to pay them, I'm saying we have the resource. You know, I've got two guys telling me they don't have the background or the knowledge, I get that. But really, we do have a guy on staff, albeit I'm not a full-time employee, that could run out and do that. I'm just looking that if there's a way to save money, because the easy answer is this is the way we always did it. I've never really liked that answer, but, you know, since we're looking at tightening things up and doing things.
Go ahead, Jeff.
I can talk to one of our engineers and see if there's a way we can use one of our approved engineers to maybe circumvent some of the higher costs in the future, like you're talking about.
Thank you.
Can you also check with some of the surrounding cities to see if it's commonplace, or?
And what I'll do is I'll put any rationale, either pro or con, in a packet for you guys to look at.
Great.
Thank you.
All right. We have a motion with a second. Can we do a roll call?
Alderman Roy Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Sizarski?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
Great, and that passes. Let's move on to page twenty. Wooddale and Irving Park Road, safety improvements. Are there any questions? Alderman Eugene Wesley?
Yeah, nine hundred thousand.
Why are we still on the retainer for nine hundred thousand?
Still revealing? Okay, I think Brad mentioned this earlier, but I won't steal your thunder. Go ahead.
I was just going to say it was shrewd financial planning that we were able to break it up into two separate fiscal years. Remember, we had the over million dollar shortfall from our grant funding, and we were able to spread that out over two fiscal years. So that was the plan.
So is that, I'm sorry, Randy, is that grant money or no? So that's our, our?
Yeah, that was the shortfall. We had over ten million dollars in grant money, and this was the shortfall that we didn't have grant for.
Okay, great. No other questions? Great. We'll move on to twenty-one, but we've talked about, so we'll just skip that, if that's okay? Great. Go on.
Skipping along.
Not scratching. Twenty-two. Okay, so we're going back to page twenty-one, which talks about the Dalewood sidewalk, which we talked about earlier. Jeff? Uh, go ahead, Jeff.
Yeah, we're working, we're going to work with Robinson to see if we can consolidate that into the Squaw Creek and make the number come lower for this year, and then we'll report back.
Okay. Any other follow-up questions?
No.
Okay, great. We're going to go to page twenty-two, which is the Elgin O'Hare project. Any questions there? Good. Engineering, go ahead. Alderman Sizarski?
Is that closed out, or?
There's still, there's still some residual closeout work going on out there, and some studies that we would engage HR Green for, we have them on retainer. As you see the number, and if you go back even to like in fiscal year sixteen, seventeen, it was high, got lower, 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 lower. So there's still a little bit that we want to have a cushion in case we have some more need for them.
All right, twenty-three. Any questions? Have we, we had any updates on twenty-three? I know, Chief, you were working on the women's locker room, or we're trying to see if we can get it funded in this fiscal year. Is there any updates, or are you guys prepared to give an update on that?
Just want to wait till we get to the page.
Huh?
We want to wait to get that to that page.
We have an individual page.
Oh, oh, you're right, I'm sorry. I, forgive me, I'm looking at the overview. Any other questions on twenty-three? Good. Page twenty-four. Great. We'll go on to page twenty-five. The City Hall aesthetic improvements. I'll go from left to right, any questions? Good? Good? Oh, Jeff, go ahead.
Yeah, just, as you know, we, the committee approved the electronic sign, so we're going to bring that to the next council meeting for final approval. We had to separate out the train station sign because of the want or desire for potential additional signs at the train station. But also in the City Hall aesthetic program, we were working on some landscape sprucing up outside of City Hall. We had a contract for under ten thousand dollars, which I informed you guys that HR Green was going to come up and try to utilize what we had out there. And then with some of this hundred and twenty-five, then institute, or implement the landscaping. But it's going to cost a little bit more now, so I think there's about four or five thousand more in design work, so I'm going to have to bring that back to you guys. And we'll talk about the landscape design outside City Hall, and that'll be coming at a future meeting.
Will that be using the money that we're saving from taking the signs out?
We're not spending any extra money, it's just a couple thousand dollars extra for the plan. We have the money to do the landscaping. It's just, I don't have authority to spend another four thousand dollars.
Okay. Brad?
And then, just point of clarification too, the hundred and twenty-five thousand that we're saying is spent in fiscal year eighteen is assuming that, there's a couple other projects that haven't come to you in addition to that landscaping plan, so they are forthcoming. So that number is presupposing that those projects get completed this year. So that number might be lower depending on how bids come back or what the council wants to do with a couple of the other. So particularly, just talking to Mr. Rubach, the Ballard lights outside, you know, the white post lights, replacing those. We're actually getting quotes right now to replace the carpeting in this room and down the hallway, the lovely carpeting down there. And then depending, there's a couple other just minor, just projects with the lighting and whatnot around City Hall, so, but those are all, all come to you at some point. Well, we'll hear about them at some point, depending on the cost, and then we'll go from there on.
Did we ever get a final number of that one, well, I'm assuming one twenty-five is spent, but how much of that was for that, for the city sign? Did we ever come up with a final number? I thought it was seventy.
I don't remember the exact amount, but I do know it's going to be
Seventy or seventy-five.
The agenda, I believe, next week.
Okay. Could you, yeah, maybe include a note in the?
It'll be on the agenda, so the amount will be on there.
Got it. Okay, great. Alderman Jacob?
That's what I've verification, I'm pretty sure, Alderman Messina checked with you, Brad. That new sign, that was included in fiscal year twenty-eighteen, because we approved it already. Correct? Okay, thank you.
Okay, we'll move on. Page twenty-six, information technology. We are going to skip unless there's any questions. Nothing proposed for fiscal year nineteen.
What kind of equipment?
Yeah. Police department squad cars, laptops. I got to see Brad's computer tower the other day. I think he's probably the last person left that has one. All things that we can talk about next year at this time. Is that okay? Is that, is that okay? Alderman Eugene Roy Wesley?
I guess so.
Great. Page twenty-seven, engineering of the streetlight installations. Any questions? Left to right?
This isn't engineering, this is for the city streetlight program.
Oh, sorry, I'm reading the wrong line, sorry, that's the division. So, sorry, streetlight installation, period. Any questions?
What streetlight?
These are not the decorative streetlights, these are the regular streetlights.
This is for when residents do surveys, and the city council wants to install lights on streets.
Jeff, just, I could barely hear you up here, but this is the program that we started that residents could request a streetlight and go through that application process?
Correct.
Okay. Alderman Jacob?
Yeah, since we have that money budgeted, if a resident does not come forward this year, I know the mayor and I, and Alderman Messina, and a couple other people here have brought up that the streets are pretty dark in Wooddale. It might be a good idea to start putting lights, more lights throughout town. So if nobody comes forward and asks for a streetlight, can we start putting some more lights throughout town?
So I think I'd ask this, and if you don't mind, I was going to comment, if I don't answer it, maybe bracket answer, but I know Alderman Sorrentino has been pretty adamant about this. This can be brought up through the application process by street. So if you have the majority of that street you live on, like my little street, if I have the majority, I can petition to bring that to the board and ask for that ten thousand dollars or rough amount to get that streetlight put in, put in street by street. Is that, go ahead, Brad?
Jeff?
Go ahead.
Yeah, I think what Alderman Jacob's getting at, you're correct, but he's also correct. He's implying that if nobody wants to participate in that program, the city has every right to go in and lighten up streets we feel are too dark.
Which I know we've talked about in the past. Mayor, any other follow-ups?
Right, I brought this up only because some streets, they're so dark. I mean, there might be a street that's light at the corner and at the other corner, you know, but in between, pitch black, any kid walking down the street, somebody hiding behind a bush, you'd never see him, get jumped, whatever. I know, I've talked to the chief about it. I know he'd like to see some lights, but those are council decisions.
And I think the big up thing for question for, is the power piece of it. Brad, I know we talked about that, right, and running the power, not so much the light, but, go ahead, and then I'll get you next. Alderman Catalano?
Sure, there's a couple things. From a budgetary standpoint, sure, if you guys want to put a light, put a light, but that, at the end of the day, is a pure policy decision, because currently that's not the policy.
Right.
And to your point, yeah, I mean, you could put up a light for a few grand, or it could be, you know, five digits, depending on where power is, and if you have to get easements and things of that nature. So power is really the, one of the biggest inhibitors to putting up lights in some cases. But again, at the end of the day, there's the budget component, which of the authorities there, the authority's there, but it's a policy decision at that point that would be the eight or nine of you to make that determination if you just want to go in and unilaterally put in lights when people haven't asked for it.
Versus asking for an easement.
Correct.
Got you. Alderman Catalano?
Yeah, my, I think we should change the policy on that. Last summer, I was knocking on the doors on Gilbert Avenue, because a lot of the residents wanted lights, and I was successful enough to get the petitions. But then, when the city sent out the survey to the residents, hardly nobody responded. So I would like to see a different policy. And then a lot of the residents came back and said, oh, why didn't we get lights? Well, because a lot of people didn't respond, so.
I know there's been talk about looking at the process for not only that, but also the street bumps, or the speed bumps, that process as well. But I guess we can deal with that as it comes up, absolutely. Good with that? Jeff?
Are you telling me you want those as future items? The policy revisions?
Yes, especially on the streetlights.
I need to know if I need to bring my sleeping bag that night. I remember those meetings, they were long.
Yeah, if you could put those as future items, please. Mayor?
We've gone through all this, and what happens is, like Alderman Catalano just said, residents, yes, 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 and when time comes, they don't want them, then they start arguing, how come it's in front of my house? Why didn't you put it in front of her house, or his house? And you guys start getting the calls, and that's why we just put in the policy people want, we send it to them, they fill out the form. So if that block said no, they get another chance. Tell them, do another petition, ask for it, whatever, and tell them to say yes, and they'll get it. But somebody's going to have to sponsor the light also, and that's where you're going to start having a lot of arguments, and believe me, we spent a lot of time on this, that's why we came up with this. And we didn't even have money in the budget before, but lights were coming up. This was years ago, and I said, why don't we just put thirty thousand in? And that's when we started that. It's probably eight years now.
Are there any more questions on the funding, instead of the philosophy of the program, and if we should change it?
We should change it.
Jeff, go ahead.
Why don't I just, I'll circulate the policies for refresher, and then you guys could contact me and see if there's some major concerns about the policies. Because we probably haven't looked at them in a while. So I'll send the policies to you guys, and then I'll wait some feedback if there's concerns. Because they're relatively new, so that's why.
Okay, Alderman Jacob?
I just want verification, so the, what I had, the question I had asked, that is a policy change as well. I couldn't say that let's spend this thirty thousand if no residents come forward and put lights in, correct?
Correct.
At this time, okay.
Okay. One last question I had, can private streets apply for it, for the program?
That's a Jeff question.
There any question? Okay, we'll skip that. When that comes up as a future item, we can discuss if it does. Page twenty-eight, regarding streetlight installations on Irving Park Road. Left to right, any questions? Alderman Eugene Wesley?
How did, I thought most of the streetlights on Irving Park Road are not ours, the IDOTS. How many do we have along Irving Park Road?
We can replace all the lights on Irving Park Road. IDOT's not going to pay for nice black lights. We replaced the lights as part of the intersection project. We made the nice black lights, and the plan is to then go the rest of Irving Park Road with the same lights, or similar lights that we put in the intersection, unless, Ken?
IDOT giving us some money for it?
No.
That's why we're buzzing for it.
Currently, all the lights on Irving Park Road, the city maintains. That was a policy IDOT did numerous years ago. If you wanted streetlights at the time, it was your responsibility to maintain them. Bensonville obviously got theirs done, they've gone through several iterations with IDOT to get those poles installed, so the current poles there are ours, and we do maintain them.
We? Any follow-up question?
Yes, so you're trying to tell me we own every pole, from borderline to borderline, of light poles that we maintain?
If they're not on traffic signals, or if they're not commet poles, they're city poles, correct?
So if a car takes... So if a car takes a pole down?
We replace them, correct?
We replace it?
Yes.
Even if it's ComEd owned?
No. If it's an aluminum forty-seven foot pole that's currently out there, if it gets, gets hit, we replace it.
So would ComEd consider doing a, a cost share on this program? Probably not.
No, ComEd, we already, they already placed their LED lights earlier this-
I just thought maybe I'll throw it out there.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Thank you. In looking at all these streetlight installations and light projects, I, I failed to notice the value placed on a human life. Maybe you could put that in the next budget and see if the human life outweighs the cost factor, because that's what's at stake here.
Future act, future item? I'm just kidding. Kidding, kidding. Alderman Sorrentino, any follow-ups?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? All right, let's move on. Page twenty-nine, decorative streetlights. We've talked a little bit about this. Is there any other questions? Mayor?
Yeah, and it's basically looking at, these are the decorative streetlights. In 2020, you've got Foster to three ninety. I mean, that area's, the TIF area, at some point, we might be able to use some TIF dollars. I was wondering if we just push that back and bring the, you know, twenty-one forward. Even the 2022, I mean, those are huge numbers. I'm sure we'll break that up at some point, but the TIF, I don't, I don't see any reason to move that TIF one up.
Jeff?
I know, I know the reason that the numbers, specifically twenty-two, is in there were for cash flow projections.
Yeah, no, no. And I, I foresee us probably making that three years, because I, I don't see us spending, unless of course if there's a windfall of cash, then we'll spend the 800,000, but, which would be awesome. But I foresee us breaking that down eventually to two or three years over there on, on Addison Road, just like we did Wooddale Road. Only Wooddale Road took ten years. We don't want to take ten years again.
We, we could reevaluate. I would say just reevaluate next year this time, because we know next year we're doing division, because we're syncing it up with the street project.
Right. And, but I'm just saying, the other ones, the TIF area, we might be able to use TIF money, just push it back and move the cheaper one forward.
It's possible.
That's all I'm saying. Just a comment, simple comment, that's all.
The ones from Wooddale Road to Montrose to Elizabeth would tie in well with the, with the park districts, completion of their project as well. Food for thought. Any other questions? All right, we'll move on to page thirty, which is, there is nothing for fiscal year seven nineteen, but I did have a question for the chief. So, I was asking Brad about this and he wasn't sure, but it says, this project will be placed on hold until the county decides on evidence submission and their possible budget of a project. So, we weren't sure if evidence submission, meaning like they submit evidence to us, or is there some ruling in a court we're waiting for regarding the submission of body camera evidence?
So, the circuit clerk and the state attorney's office was looking at going to a cloud-based evidence submission solution, where they would pay for some of the storage of that. It's my understanding that's kind of at a standstill now. As far as the body cams go, we've been working, we have an internal working group that includes command staff, union representatives, patrol officers, detectives. And so we've been demoing different products and, and looking at, you know, costs and policy and stuff. So, you know, at some point, we're gonna be ready to come forward with the recommendation. And one of the things that was noted in this budget worksheet is that, that we have a significant amount of money in DUI technology fund that has to be used towards the prosecution of DUIs, and body cams would probably fit under that. So certainly when we're at that point and, and ready, you know, the council might want to explore using those types of funds that would move it from the CIP.
I can't speak for my colleagues, but I definitely would like to see it sooner than later. I'm guessing with all the departments trying to ramp up and get these cameras, any type of grant funding is gonna be slim picking, so.
Right now, the grants have been for the larger departments, but we certainly continue to look. And there is some talk that there might be something coming out, but I haven't seen anything concrete yet through the criminal justice authority.
And happy belated law enforcement day, chief.
Thank you.
We'll move on to page thirty-one. Are there any questions from left to right? Chief, sorry, I did have another question for you. Yes, unfortunately. I'm my own worst enemy. So we're part of Addison Consolidated, right? We pay into this. And I guess my question is, this contribution that we're making, why isn't that part of, you know, our cost to outsources to them in the first place?
This was, it's separate from the, it's a completely separate countywide project, the new DuPage County Justice Information System. And we had done a letter of agreement, or a letter of intent, and then last year we did a intergovernmental agreement to join with this. So ETSB, who is the nine oh one board for the county, is paying for a significant portion of, of this. But we have to pay the ongoing maintenance and user fees.
Okay.
So each agency, based on their number of users, will have to pay for this. And ninety-five percent of the county is in on this, and it's actually gonna be, be rolled out in the next couple of months. Train to trainer starts in just over a month. So the project is gonna be completely rolled out by, I think, June of this year, so.
Okay. Great. Any other questions on that page? Good. Move on to page thirty-two, the women's locker room upgrades. Okay, left to right. Okay. Alderman Eugene Wesley?
I really, I really think we should find the money to get it done in 2018 due to the fact is that the group of officers that are coming on board at this time, that are in the cammy are mainly women.
Right, chief, go ahead.
Sure, if I could touch on that. When we were compiling this budget, we were waiting for a quote from the company. And we, we figured the 40,000 was gonna be substantially high, and it was. Actually, we just received a quote from them since the book was put together. It's just over 10,200 dollars to revamp the women's locker room. And the problem we have is we have six full-duty lockers, that those have drawers underneath that you can put a duty bag, and they're fifteen inches wide, so you can fit in your vest and all your, all your hanging stuff. We have a number of lockers that are either, most of them are like ten inches wide, and that's more for our non-sworn personnel, which we used to have our own dispatch centers. So they would keep a couple of uniforms in there, but they don't have duty belts and duty bags and all that. So what, the proposal that we came with to kind of revamp the locker room would give us five additional of the much larger duty lockers that could fit into there and two other twelve-inch ones. And actually, yeah, so we have six of the full-size ones right now, and with the two females that are in the cammy, because five out of our last six hires have been females, we're actually short one of the full-duty lockers. This would give us four extras. And, you know, in the next few years, if we hire four more females, well, we're gonna have to look at a different solution anyways. But this gets us through the next few years to give them adequate-sized lockers to, to change and store their duty gear.
They're the same ones that were in the men's locker room, from what I understood. And they're modular, right? So you can add on to the base, so you can start with a small amount and you can add on as needed, right?
That's correct.
Okay. Could I also ask if we move this forward? I heard of another police department donating their old storage lockers to a homeless facility. Is that something that you guys are open to? If they can, they can keep them in order versus demoing them?
Yeah, I, I would say there would be one of two uses. Either us to use as some type of evidence storage or something, the old ones. Or certainly donate, but we wouldn't just throw them in the garbage. They're, they're in good enough shape that they could be used by someone.
Great. Good. Alderman Eugene Wesley?
So I'm gonna obtain a motion, and I don't know if I, or give directions, that I'd like to make a motion that approved 2018 to move forward with the expanding the women's locker room, whatever price tag you came up with there.
Well, before we get asked for a second, I think Jeff has a funding mechanism?
Well, yeah, we'll just take it out of this year's CIP and then we'll eliminate the sheet. It'll come back to the committee meeting, because it's over 10,000 dollars.
That's fine.
But it'll be one of the next committees.
I just-
So you don't need a motion? You can move forward, right?
No, we'll just bring it to the next committee meeting.
Do you need, okay, next action, or, do you need to add it as a future item?
We will, and then we'll just pull the sheet out of the CIP.
I just don't want-
Go ahead.
I just don't want to delay it. I mean, once those two candidates come out, out of the cammy, one is gonna be short. So can we fast-track that up?
Yeah, we're good.
Okay.
He's committed to that. Alderman Jacob?
This is for the chief. You said how many lockers? How many additional large lockers?
So this gives us, let me just make sure. This gives us five additional of the much larger lockers. We'll eliminate, we have about, we'll eliminate some of the smaller ten-inch lockers and replace them with fifteen-inch lockers with the duty drawer underneath that we can keep boots and their duty bags in.
Oh, go ahead.
Now, I, I mean, if you, if there's five, how many more could you actually fit in there? I'm, I'm not sure how big the locker room is. Could you fit seven or eight? I mean, would it make sense to, if it's like seven, just do the extra two now? Or since the, but, you know, it came in so far under budget?
Go ahead, chief.
No, we, we would prefer to do the five now, because this leaves one small wall, but that still leaves us with five additional lockers for our non-sworn personnel that have uniforms in there and not the amount of uniforms or duty gear, but we still need to have some lockers for them. So this gives everyone a locker, leaves us a little room if we do have more female hires. And if we have, you know, three or four more, or more than four more down the road, then we're gonna have to explore something different anyways, because the room won't be big enough for even smaller lockers.
Okay, thank you.
Before we move on, we're gonna discuss this later, but is there anything else in that room that would warrant us having to remodel down the road that we can consider, even if we don't do it this fiscal year? You know, being that we have that money, is there anything in there that you would note, like the bathrooms or the shower stalls or the flooring or any of that that we should?
No, the, both locker rooms are very similar as far as the layout of the bathroom sink and two sho, and the shower stall areas. So I think we're fine as far as that goes, and there's really nowhere else to expand right now, if, if, you know, a few years down the road.
I'm just, how's the condition, I guess, is, is my question. I just would hate for you to come back in, in a couple of years and say, hey, it's, you know, we've ignored the women's locker room for so long, but it's trash. So I'd rather do it all now, if we could. Go ahead.
No, short of, you know, if a faucet goes bad or something else, they're in decent shape. Both locker rooms are. We don't need to do a major rehab of them. Just, we need to add these lockers for the females.
All right. Alderman Roy Wesley, we're gonna talk about it next week, but is there anything specific?
We're gonna talk about what?
We're gonna be talking about this project, the next committee meeting.
Didn't say when.
One of the next. Okay, one of the next. Any other questions?
That was my question, is when? Because I want this done as soon as possible, because these officers are coming on.
Jeff?
Next month.
I think we can get it on the January twenty-fifth committee.
Okay.
Yeah.
Great, all right. Is it possible to bring it straight to council? It sounds like there's-
10,000 dollars.
Yeah, just over your threshold anyhow. Let's just bring it straight to council.
Yeah, sure.
Can you do that?
Sure.
Okay, great. Done. Everyone's favorite topic, page thirty-four, the clock tower.
Thirty-three.
Oh, I skipped that. See, I got so excited about thirty-four that I skipped thirty-three. Page thirty-three, the facade improvement program. Any questions? Good? All right. Page thirty-four, the clock tower. Any questions? If you do, keep it to yourself. I'm just kidding. Anything? Mayor, any, any comments, questions? Okay, just waiting for that monopoly money to come in, we'll be good. Okay. Anybody else? Good? Okay, great. Thirty-five, the new upgrade to the ERP system. Are there any questions? Go ahead, Jeff.
If you remember, you approved the flux capacitor at one of the last meetings, so Nick's, Nick has that fluxing, so we're good.
The flux capacitor? I got that. I do just want to make clear, I mean, I, I guess it should be obvious, but those costs that we have out in the schedule, those are just because we're phasing them in, right? So we're not doing a complete overhaul of the ERP system. For those that are watching at home, and I've had that question from a resident before, is that correct, Brad? We're doing in this, we're doing this in phases. You and I talked about this. Finance department, and then we may add a few more departments, a little bit.
Okay, okay, sure. When you say we're not doing a full overhaul, I mean, we are.
We are, we're just phasing it over.
But we're not doing it three times each of the next years. But yeah, correct. So there is a phasing component, the higher upfront costs for data conversion, things of that nature, so it's, yeah.
It's more of a payment schedule, what I showed in the out years. Okay, thank you. Page thirty-six, o'hair noise. Questions? 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 Alderman Eugene Wesley?
I, is this the-
Jacob.
Is this the committee, SOC? And could we have a list of what towns are in, in it now, because I heard one town may not be in it anymore?
Go ahead, Jeff.
Yeah, typically, this is where we draw the funds to contribute to SOC to help pay for some of the consultants. I don't know if the community you're referring to is in or out.
Nobody's dropped down.
Yeah, it's still the same.
Okay, just quick question on that, right? We've just approved an eighteen-month runway rotation plan for night noise. So the question had come up, can't we just, are we able to kind of skip a year and, and not contribute to SOC, since some folks did not see the value? Although daytime noise is still very prevalent. Jeff?
It's really not a membership fee. There's a small membership fee that they're talking about reinstituting, but that is like a thousand or two thousand or three thousand dollars.
Okay.
What the, what the big money is, is for if we need to pay for a specific study from the consultants, which we have seen benefits from those studies. Those are, those studies are basically the only reason why we have rotation plans like we, we have got enacted. That's, we may not spend any of that money in nineteen. I, I don't know. There's no guarantee we have to spend any money with SOC other than the talk of maybe our membership fee coming back, but again, that's like 3,000 dollars.
To be clear with the folks at home, the only way we would spend that money is if there was something for the-
Something beneficial for the rotation plan, and that money would come to council for approval as it has in the past when we spent it.
Alderman Jacob, did you have a question? You're good. Sorry. Okay.
Did you move to the, the RPs?
Yeah. Do you have a question? Page thirty-seven, the treatment plant veterans memorial, which is scheduled for 2020, not next year. Any questions? Go ahead, Alderman Catalano.
So what's going on with that as far as streetscape? Any movement on the medallions or?
Alderman Woods, would you like to talk about that, or Sorrentino?
Well, it hasn't been a topic of conversation, because as you can see, the money's in 2020.
Okay, fair enough. Brad?
Yeah, I don't know that we want to go through all the history on this project.
No, no.
But the, the reason it got pushed out to 2020 at this point was, the idea was that if the clock tower in that northeast corner were going in, they would try to, if, you know, it looked nice, everybody liked it, would try to mimic that look down at the treatment plant. So we don't spend money to put something at the treatment plant, then something else different is a quarter mile down the road, and so to, to try to, try to sneak it up some. So the medallion thing, it's not gone, it's just trying to work all that together and tie it in with the clock tower on that northeast corner, presupposing everybody likes it, of course.
Okay, so we, so the medallions need to be tied into the work, any of the landscape work that would need to be done? Is that what we're-
There, there was a slew of different options that were talked about, and there really was no consensus.
Okay.
So not only was there no consensus, as Brad had mentioned, now we have this other streetscape project that we can match some of the stonework perhaps, so.
Okay, makes sense. Okay, Alderman Sizmarzki?
Is there any way to move some of the money forward, a little bit of money forward for maintenance and clean it up? Because it, I mean, the moss grows on those bricks, and it, it just prune up the trees, do, make some, make, make it look nice. I mean, it's, it's falling into disarray to me.
Is that something public works, is it operational?
Yeah, that's just more of an operational thing. Could mandate a little bit tidier cleanings over there. Ken's writing it down.
I'm sorry?
Mr. Rubach's writing it down.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Rubach. Any follow-ups? Okay. Alderman Eugene Wesley?
Could, could the streetscape bring this up on their next committee and, and let's get a, a plan, what we're gonna do in 2020? Because I, the way I'm looking at it here, this thing has been pushed back, pushed back, pushed back, and we talked about, we talked about trimming those big evergreens, and that, that still ain't done. And, and I agree. I mean, that, that is veterans' park, but I don't think we trim enough to see the, the toward, the tower light, you know, the-
If you're questioning, if we're waiting for the tower or the adjacent company's corner to be cleaned, so we can view that. If you're questioning if we're waiting for the tower or the adjacent company's corner to be cleaned so we can view that.
I, I understand, but we already got, we got the design, we know what the corner is going to look like. At least the streetscape could give us some direction that we are ready to pull the trigger on 2020 that we're going to come back here 2020, go through the fiscal year and say, oh, we aren't ready to go with it. We got to push it back to 2021. I'm just saying, can we have it up front of what the streetscape would like to see? We got the design of the tower.
So they're working on planning, right? Okay, so you guys...
All I'm asking for.
Yeah. Yeah, much of that's there, right? You just got to bring it back up. Okay, great. I'm not going to spend any more questions because I don't want to spend too much time on this. Good? All right. Page 38. Economic development. Very vague. Any questions on this?
Yep.
Okay. Alderman Roy Wesley?
Tell me what you're going to spend $150,000 on.
I'm sorry?
He heard a question.
Go ahead, Jeff.
That was from last year. Next year's $50,000.
Go ahead, tell me what you're going to spend it on.
That was the comp plan.
Okay.
So Alderman... Alderman Roy Wesley? Just because we can't hear you on this side, you were questioning the $150,000.
Those from last year.
From last year, from what we're understanding, it's because of the comp plan was included in that, correct?
Yep.
Brad, is that accurate?
There was also a TIF study in that as well.
Right. I had asked a question as well about that market strategy firm, and I know you answered that very well. But in the future years, our work is going to be done with them, so...
How much more?
We won't have to pay them to have us be asked what colors look great. We'll be moving on to better, better development questions, in my opinion. And that will require, it looks like a market analysis research is what these following years are going to be towards, correct? Brad?
As currently constructed, that is correct. There's a couple of firms out there, so probably want to get some qualifications and, you know, body of work from them, whatnot. But there are a few firms out there that, you know, community developments are aware of that, you know, does the work that we would like to have done.
Okay, good. Mayor?
I think this is going towards what, that Buxton and retail strategies, which I hear at some point we're going to get a presentation. Is that correct?
Go ahead, Brad.
I'll defer to Jeff.
It's a little bit more intensive than the original Buxton idea.
Retail strategy.
That all the council was in favor of and liked. This takes a little bit of a step further, and we think it's a better product, but yeah, it's forthcoming.
Perfect. Great, we look forward to hearing more about it. Alderman Jacob? Alderman Roy Wesley?
You know, a couple of years ago, we talked about a company that would help us to bring more businesses in town that we've...
This is a philosophical debate. Can we wait till this comes up? I mean, this is, this is something we're budgeting for the future.
Well, that's where the 50, that's kind of where the $50,000 would go, wouldn't it?
Yeah, but it's going to be brought up as a separate future item. I mean, for the sake of this plan, we can, so we can move forward. If, go ahead, if you want to ask your question, but if it's something that's going to question a bigger philosophy of how they go to market, I'd rather not waste...
Well, it's just a way of saying that we're not spending our money wisely.
Well, I think they just answered it. I'm not, I'm not debating you, but we're talking about the next phase of this 50 grand is going to be towards doing, I think, exactly that, right? They're doing market research and analytics.
He's mentioned that. Marketing research is that company. Where was that company?
That's going to be this year, though.
Yeah, that was years ago, too.
Yeah.
The problem is, we don't do what we're saying we're doing.
I'm sorry, do you have, do you have a follow-up comment? I don't want to cut you off.
I'm just saying that we should use it. We hire these people in economic development, but we don't use other tools.
Okay. Jeff?
Yeah, we never got approval to do that. That's what we're going to do now, is get approval to use the firm.
That was two years ago.
Brad? Okay, so I think we're clear, right? The direction is, and I know we're all very passionate about this, right? This is the, this is what we've all been waiting for. You guys are very clear on this, right? This next part of this, we hope, is going to be around attracting businesses to town. Right? No more colors that we need to pick out, no more pizza parties to figure that out. Bringing businesses in and working with them to figure out what works with the community and our corridors. Is that accurate?
Yes, you instituted your plan to the T of fixing up some things aesthetically on our own.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And now we're to the point where the intersection project was finished. We've got things buttoned up, we did the comp plan. This has always been plugged in for this year to start doing the next steps.
I'm not complaining. I think we've got a good plan in place, so I'm good. Any questions or comments? Cool, all right, we're moving on? Oh, sorry. Alderman Sizmarzki.
City manager, we do have the new PR person also on board.
Jeff?
Yeah, that individual starts on Monday, marketing slash special events manager. So that'll be a great help, and they could utilize some of the stuff we're learning in our comp plan, some of the branding stuff, and it should be exciting new endeavors.
Cool.
Great.
Anybody else? All right, move on. Page 39, Irving Park Road land acquisition. I'm sorry? Self-explanatory. Any questions at all?
Well, yeah.
Great.
Yes.
Sorry. Go ahead, Alderman Roy Wesley.
It says $2 million loan, this line of credit, so what, is there an interest rate with that?
Go ahead, Brad.
Yes. Unfortunately, not pulling it right off the top of my head, but we can recirculate that information, though.
So what that is, the payment schedule, all right, the repayment schedule is what we have listed?
Correct. I mean, obviously, we haven't spent, used all of that yet, but just for ease of simplicity, we just put it as level debt. You know, I've talked to the bank about the repayment schedule, and they're fine with that repayment schedule. They're fine with a couple of their alternatives depending on how much we spend between now and then, so... But we just assumed level debt on it and defies it in the five years that we agreed upon, so...
Yes.
Go ahead, Alderman Roy Wesley.
I don't remember seeing anything about what interest rates or anything on that, so...
Was it in the manager's report?
Go, go ahead, Jeff.
No, that was passed the city council within the past few weeks.
Was there a fee schedule, though?
Yeah, all the information with the interest rate and everything was in there.
Okay. Would you mind as a recap, just including it in that manager's report?
I'll recite it.
So we can see, okay, thanks. Anything else? Okay, let's move on. Any questions on page 40? Good, 41. 42, we discussed the maintenance of the reservoir tanks, three, four, and five. Any questions? Left or right? Good. Page 43, we discussed the water facilities maintenance. Any questions? Excellent. Page 44, the north treatment plant facility maintenance. Any questions there? Okay. I had a quick question before I go to Alderman Eugene Wesley. I know you answered this, but I know for the folks at home as well, there's some money budgeted for drain pump, drain pumps, which you made clear to me was not part of the $32, $30, $32 million we spent for the project. Is that the explanation, correct?
That is correct. I believe there's two of them, one was done this fiscal year, and this is completing the other one of those two pumps.
Two of two?
Correct.
Right? Okay. Do you know the lifespan of those? Something we need to budget for down the road?
Down the road's a good answer. I mean, I, I think once they're rehabbed, I don't know, pumps, but I would probably 10-plus years. I mean, I think we'd appreciate it when we're 20 initially, so probably just regular, regular O&M going forward once they're rebuilt.
Okay. Alderman Eugene Wesley?
Yeah, I, I have a question on the treatment plant. We just spent a lot of money to do that treatment plant. The only thing I don't see in here is when are we draining those tanks? And cleaning out the tanks? Aeration tanks? Because we ran into a problem when we did that treatment plant that we ended up spending a lot, lot of money to clean those tanks. It wasn't part of the contract. So tell me, what is rotation? It doesn't have to be tonight, but I would like a report on what is rotation on those tanks to be cleaned? Is it every year? Every two years? And how are we going to maintain it? Because I'm not going to sit here and go through it again.
Yeah, that, that branch is actually not Mr. Rubach's branch. That's Brad Kittleson's branch, so we'll get that answer.
I didn't say it has to be tonight, but I would like that because we might have to adjust the CIP to put that in to make sure that gets done.
Okay. That's great. It's an operational thing that he'll get back to you on then. Great. Mayor, question, comment?
Yeah, I think Brad said he can do that in-house, providing we do it more regularly. Because I remember talking to him when that situation arose, but I'm not 100% sure.
Okay, good with that? Alderman Eugene Wesley?
I'll take the answer, I don't care.
Okay, great. Page 45, the lift station rehabilitation program. Any questions from left to right? Good. Page 46, the infrastructure cap-on program. Any questions there? Page 47, the inflow infiltration study. Brad?
Just a quick comment, and this is actually something that you had pointed out, that study might not be the most appropriate phraseology for this sheet. So we're going to change it to project or program going forward instead of study, since at this point, the majority of it's work, not study. So we are, we will adjust that going forward.
So just for context, guys, I had gone to Brad and asked how the heck we were spending all this money on a study, and I got a nice schooling of, it's actually program. So, does anybody have any questions on what that covers? Because it was all new to me on what this covers, and it's pretty intensive. Good? Cool, move on. 48, we move into the unfunded projects. We'll go through all these, but like I said, I'd really like to minimize the questions on these because these are unfunded, but with the goal that maybe there's some that we can move forward, if possible. So I would say by the end of this, maybe we can give some direction to staff if there are any that we'd like to consider. That would be the end goal. So I'm going to go through each one, ask if there's any questions, and if you'd like them to maybe check market for consideration at the end. We can, we can do that at the end. Is that okay with you, Brad? Jeff? Go ahead, Jeff.
Yeah, right off the bat, I was just going to tell you that stream bank stabilization, we're waiting on grant information for that, so we can probably skip right over that one.
Right, right, okay, fair enough.
I have a question.
Go ahead, Alderman Roy Wesley.
On 48, you have all the, you got this sheet here. So these sheets that we have beyond that is all these?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Okay.
All right, so page, go ahead, Alderman Roy Wesley.
I guess I got a question on the first one, then.
Well, we're going to skip that because we're waiting for a grant on the Salt Creek Stream Bank stabilization. We applied for a grant.
But I have the sheet to 49 that says there's no money funded for 2019 for the stream, the stream bank.
Right.
So there's nothing there? We're not going to put anything there? One, I think we have an agreement with the county when we did, when they did the stream bank stabilization with the Ajax that we were supposed to put money away.
So this is currently unfunded, but you're asking why it's not funded? Is that accurate? There's nothing there. Oh, okay, go ahead, Mayor.
That's what this is, right?
Okay, Brad, go ahead, please.
So, so, there's like three questions in there. So the Ajax program and the, kind of the annual maintenance of that, that's actually budgeted for in, I believe, it's the street department's operating budget. So that's not, it never has been a part of the CIP, that Ajax program and kind of that maintenance. That's in the operating budget, which will be coming out in early February. Yeah, to maintain it. This is the result of the study that I believe was the ERA, same company that did the preserve, that did the study on what would take to redo the creek and the walls and whatnot. That was just to redo it all, so...
But there is money there for, to maintain it.
Yeah, for the, for the Ajax, for the agreement with the county, yes. That money is still there. It's just in the operating budget, not the capital budget.
Okay. Good point. All right, so we're going to move on. If there's any other questions on, on 49. Page 50, ComEd Stormwater Project.
Just one question. You're right. Alderman Peter Jacob wanted to know about the impact on the residents. How many residents does it impact because while we're doing this project? If you want to go back to, they did a presentation back in November 12, 2015, they had that presentation. I mean, the presentation explains the reason why we need to do that project. So if you want to refer back to that, that'll probably answer your question. Thank you.
Sure. I do, I do recall, just to add to that, I thought it was started at 600. I think you even said at some point it was 600, depending on who you asked. It got down to 30 at some points, depending on what study you looked at. Is that accurate, Brad or Jeff? Did I make up that number in my head?
I mean, it's easily in the hundreds.
Yeah.
So it's, it's, affects quite a few homes, yeah.
Right, right, okay. 700, right, I heard six, but seven, okay, okay.
Yeah, and so the difference was if you just took the people just along Prospect and those couple of streets, or if you took the entire watershed and all of the sanitary sewer system that fed in that led to that low point. So that's kind of where the couple of different numbers came from, is this how you were, who you were counting for? Counting the entire watershed or just that intersection, basically?
So I guess my question on this is, massive project, you know, we, we poured a ton of money into these studies. Like I think Jeff said, we basically mapped it out and engineered it for them. When are we going to be able to make an educated decision on when we can move forward? I mean, I know we said a few weeks, is that few weeks going to be that presentation of where we can finally decide, okay, can't do it, I'm not spending any more money, or is ComEd going to finally give us a decision? Jeff?
Well, there's not much more money to spend because we pretty much engineered almost the whole damn thing.
They've brought, they've brought us to unfunded, basically.
So what I can say is, I think if we decide we're going to do this project, and we talked about the phasing a little bit with Robinson, where we, we think we have a way to maybe phase it into three fiscal years, maybe even four, perhaps. So it'd be similar when we had the big war, two streets projects that took three or four years. So we think this, before this fiscal year starts, hopefully, we'll have the answer from ComEd. And like I said, we've engineered a lot of it already, so it's basically sign off and then finish up engineering, plug in funding, search for some grants. We can't really apply for grants now because we don't, it's not our land, number one, and there is no project yet. So we're hopeful to get some grants. There are some sources out there to maybe get some grants. There's definitely sources that qualify for low-interest loans for this type of project, which we could acquire. But until we get a yeah, it's really kind of, we're in a holding pattern. But we're doing a lot of the engineering work, so we're not in a holding pattern, so...
Okay. Alderman Jacob?
Mr. Member, you just mentioned grants because it's not our property, but we are, we can get grants for that.
Can't, we just can't apply yet.
Okay. All right, any other questions? We look forward to discussing it hopefully in the next month or so. Any questions, left, right? Great. 51, any questions? Move on. Mayor, do you have some? Okay. 52, the exterior window wall replacement. This is an oldie but a goodie.
Moving along, we updated the sheet this year.
We did. Changed the narrative a little bit.
All right, any questions there?
We leave it there for sentimental reasons.
All right. All right, we'll move on to the, one of my favorites, page 53, the backup to the backup generator. Any questions on this? Any questions on this? Any questions, Tony? Good. Okay, Mayor, any questions? Okay, anybody? Good. All right, we know where we stand with that. Let's move forward. Fifty-four, parking lot expansion. Timeout. Any questions, left to right? All right, Alderman Eugene Wesley?
First, if I'm remembering, what was the parking lot expansion?
Jeff?
What was the reason why we were funded? So, what was that for?
This was going to be funded at one point, I believe, and then it got pulled out at the last second, I believe, around the time of... No, but we pulled it out when we were doing the shortfall with the intersection project. We pulled it out with the shortfall for the intersection project, I believe, and then the thought was to sync this up with the SBT development project. We should move this into a funded, because the PD needs some room to maneuver over there.
You have a follow-up?
Yeah, my question is, this really needs to be moved to $24,000, this parking lot. Bring our room there. So, we need, do we cut when we come, but that developers, is there a way that conversation can come in, explain it, or...
Go ahead, Jeff.
Work where you fund this thing.
Well, it's probably easiest if we just, we just do it, and that, just put it into funded, and then...
Do we have enough space?
We had initial talks with the development, or potential development, where we think there's enough space.
So, I'm sorry.
It's okay, go ahead.
So, is there money left over in this year's budget to put this in, we put this in the budget?
To fund it.
We're going to fund it $24,000 in 2019 to expand that parking lot, because we're going to have some material, and obviously, we are.
Engineer that street.
Alderman Woods? Okay, Mayor?
I...
I don't know if he had the answer. Mayor?
I'm going to give a comment towards that. I say we wait the next few weeks, or month, month and a half, let's face it, we're not doing anything in January, February, March. We're going to have a few decisions to make, and I'd hate to move a fence five feet, when maybe we're going to move it back 20 or 30 feet. We haven't made those decisions yet, and we should probably be making those in the next couple of months. So, why move a fence and then have to move it again? Let's just make some of these decisions. Twenty-four thousand, everybody knows, we want it done, once we know exactly what we're doing.
Small enough, they can bring it up.
It, it just slide it over.
Okay. Jeff?
No, I was just implying, move it over to the funded. Move it into funded now.
At some point, right, okay.
You can move it to the funded.
Okay, so, can we do a quick roll call?
I'll make a motion to move it to the funded.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Passes, well, that doesn't pass, the motion passes to move it to funded. All right, any other questions on this? Move to page fifty-five, the Public Works facility. As mentioned earlier, we will have a separate meeting, so unless there's any burning questions you have right now, I'd ask that we have this meeting, and go ahead, Jeff.
Yeah, and I'm going to send out some information on this on January 19th, for you all to digest, and then, like Alderman, as you had, said, we'll have a special meeting to discuss.
I just would preface before we move on, that I was, I was able to see a preview of it, and yes, the number looks a little off, but there's a lot that went into that study. So, just hold on tight. Once you get the details of the study, I think it'll make a lot more sense. Fair to say, Brad, anything you want to add? Okay, go ahead, Alderman Woods?
Yeah, can, can we move that to unfunded, or funded? I'm trying to make Ken back there happy.
Guys, got to send some more meetings before we...
We've been talking about it for years, we might as well just move it up.
We could tell Matt that Ken got it done.
There you go. That would be amazing. All right, page fifty-six, the bike path resurfacing. Any questions? I guess I just, you going to take what I'm going to ask you?
Possibly.
We had gotten a question of where? Target Bridge, is what you told me? Anything you want to add to that?
Yeah, just, just the bike network, the path network off of the Target Bridge, it kind of goes north, I believe, and then west into I task, and then south, was it down Station or Miller, and then over to, was it Addison Road, and then what we put in the bridge with the railing, the sidewalk with the railing, so, that bike path, there was some, a lot of people thought it was the reservoir one, but now it's the, I forget what the technical name of it is, but it's one that, yeah, that pretty much connects most of DuPage County, it's, it's part of that one. Doesn't?
Okay. Alderman, Mrs. Marskey?
This bike path does go through where the...
ComEd.
ComEd might be going, so...
Correct.
Just stay on the unfunded until...
Yep, yep. Alderman Eugene Wesley?
The only thing I would ask is that...
Since so many people, you know, a lot of bike riders do use it now, that that goes all the way Brookfield Zoo, all I'm saying is, let's make sure it's, it's at least safe that we patched, if there's a hole in there, that we patch it. I mean, I don't...
There's a maintenance schedule for that, right? I know we're not going to be...
No, there wasn't.
We're not talking about it until ComEd...
There wasn't a maintenance schedule on that at one time. Unless we added a maintenance schedule on it.
Yes, this very topic came up when we looked into doing the bridge, so we're going to be out there this spring, and making sure everything's, you know, patched as best as we can for now.
Right, I'm just looking at safety. Thanks.
Okay. So, page fifty, sorry, anything else on page fifty-six regarding the bike path? Good. Page fifty-seven, the Potter Street beautification. Start from left.
Well, I'm, I know you put a couple of...
I'd say I'd rather give you guys some time, and then I'll go ahead. Mayor?
Hundred and fifty thousand for beautification landscaping. Can we just put in some trees in-house, something simple, just to get it started? I mean, we've got the grass, let's put in some trees before we get, try and become elaborate.
So, so, I guess, to answer your question, this is something very simple we've talked about, adding trees we could do in-house. This number to me is very bloated, well, extremely bloated. We, we had it at 150, I say even less than 100. Doing in-house with trees and just really filling in the blanks with wild grasses, I was really pushing toward the savings, and really nailing down those savings from the other project, to say we could offset some of the cost. I think, and I'll press Public Works, this could be done in-house, number one, and number two, to Art's point, once again, another project, we don't need to pay for construction supervision, supervision, if you don't...
Engineering.
Yeah, or, yeah, no engineering, no supervision, I mean, it's another, I hate to say, I'm not going to call it a waste, but 10 to 20 grand to pay for, for supervision on how to plant flowers, well...
I'll watch for 10.
There you go. I'll bring my grandma out, she can help.
I'll split her with her.
Go ahead, Jeff.
Yeah, I mean, the 150 is, is bloated under your scenario.
It should have been funded, you know my scenario. It should have been in the fund, this is phase two to me, so this is, I, how it's unfunded to me, you've heard an earful already.
The 150 number was derived from the number from HR Green for the landscaping.
Right.
That's where we got that number. The council chose the option without the landscaping. So, what we did is, we took apart the numbers and put back in the number that would have included the souped-up landscaping. Alderman Messina is correct. It will cost less if we just do some of our own trees, or native grasses, or whatever. So, if that is the case, then it would be lower than that.
Much.
But we put in the HR Green landscape design plan that we didn't go with as the phase two.
Alderman Jacob?
However, Mr. Mayor, it's like Alderman Messina said, I thought we were, said that we were going to do this as phase two and get this done, funded, so I'm not sure how it got to unfunded.
So, before Alderman Woods tears this apart, I'd like to just add that we've got the zip drive of the minutes from that project.
Bring them on.
And it was decided, it was decided that at the time, we would do no, we would do none of that, right? And that's, I'm sure what you're going to, you're going to say, and I think we said, phase one is that, but phase two would be, we need to come back and do it, we just need to be smart, right? So, that's where we're coming with this. So, I was just a little disappointed, it was not coming in as funded, but I understand why you guys put it in as unfunded.
Because it can...
Oh, well, go ahead, Alderman Woods, because I stole your thunder.
No, there's no, I was just going to clarify, that we voted on it, and there were three options. We took the less expensive option.
Which was over budget.
Which was over budget, and there was no funding. So, I'm okay putting trees and stuff over there. I'm not okay putting 100, another 150, 100 over there.
Right, right, right.
You want to add trees and do some stuff that Jeff can do?
So, can I, can I make a motion to reduce the funding to, I would, I'll make it tight, $75,000 and move to funded, half?
Seventy-five thousand for trees?
Yeah, so is.
As plants.
We do...
Roy wants to talk.
Yeah, really.
I'd like to make a motion to have Roy's landscaping.
I don't think so.
And get a loan for 75,000 through our task of bank to pay for this.
There you go.
At what percent?
Jeff, go ahead.
Yeah, I think, I think the strategy that we, we've talked about before, both on the record and off the record, was that we were going to go with the cheapest option, which was the blank template option.
Right.
And then take a step back, then the following year, if there was a flavor or a budgetary want to do the additional HR Green landscaping, we would. If there was not a flavor or desire to do that, we could take money out of the operational budget and do grasses and trees, which certainly, we could pretty much eliminate this as an item altogether.
You see, you, operational, because I know this is above the...
We have a tree replacement program.
You think we have, yeah, for trees, right, but we don't have the operational, do we, do we have operational money for plantings, like tree, like wild grasses and all that, that would fill in the island around the tree?
I would defer to Ken on that, but I'm not sure native grasses here and there are going to cost that much.
I didn't think so, okay.
Right.
I was trying to give him some wiggle in the not to exceed amount, 75,000.
I got a question.
Okay, so, could we have, could we, could we have Ken comment first, and then I'll get to the...
Yeah, that would most likely come out of then the tree budget. That's the area where we take any landscape. I mean, we'd have to see, you know, detail, kind of what you guys want, to get a feel of how much it's going to cost, but that's where I would probably take that money out of.
And I would, I would ask if you guys are going to do that, I, in my opinion, I mean, this is, all of us represent the city, but in my opinion, just, I don't, I don't think we need the grasses past Pine, going east on Pine. It really was that focus of that corridor that was the pain, the eyesore, for so many residents, that we were focusing on. So, just my comments, if that would help save some money. Mayor?
All right. I, I keep hearing grasses. Are we talking about the same grasses that are in the pond, that doesn't look much better than when we started that project, because, gotta hope not.
Go ahead, Jeff.
I'm talking about some of the stuff that you see in, in front of, in the back parking lot of City Hall, the grasses, or in the remote metro lot, there's grasses with mulch beds, stuff like that.
The intersection.
Not quite the intersection, those are a little bit more...
And some of those look okay, and, some of those look okay, and some of those are over nine inches, and they're against our code.
But they're native grasses.
I, I mean, something nice. Those natural grasses tend to end up, if you're not on top of those all the time, you end up looking like weeds, I mean...
Hey, hey, hey.
They don't?
That's not a weed.
But...
Well, we have some areas in town that we do our, like, I'm talking about the metro remote lot with those grasses over there with mulch. We'll come back, we'll bring some pictures, have some tree ideas.
Because I'm getting nervous, I'm looking at that pond on Potter that we redid, and yeah, it's a little cleaner, it's a little better, and functions better, but it's still nothing like that picture I showed. Is this going to be the rain garden we have, and I, it definitely doesn't look like the picture I was looking at.
Well, Matt was offering to relocate his weeds when they do their project.
That pond's not going to, we have an expanded level item and a plan for that, and as well, there's metro problems over there as well.
I understand about the metro problems.
So...
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
I'm on time on this page, Peter.
Okay. Alderman Jacob, any questions?
Well, I was just on ComEd, exactly what the mayor said about their pond, I mean, if we did want those grasses, which we don't, we could save a lot of money by just taking that grass.
So, we have a motion in a second to Alderman Sorrentino's part, point, we've spent enough time, it's going to come up for discussion. Motion was to see if we could reduce it down to 75,000.
Taking it out of the operational budget of the...
Yeah, removing part of it, out of the operation, right?
No, we're going to take it out of the...
Take some of it out of the operational budget and reduce that amount for the grass, I guess for sake of your discovery, before it comes to a future item, of, call it 50,000? I don't know.
No, we're saying that we don't need any of this, it's all going to come out of that budget.
But he doesn't have, did you say, Ken, that you don't, you don't know the, the grasses, I don't know what the formal fancy word is, is going to come out of that budget?
Yes, the decorative grasses would probably come out of that budget, so we would probably have to make some sort of adjustment. Right now, our tree budget's about 20 or 30,000, so I don't want to, obviously, shortchange our residents on that program.
See, he's saying he does have, you do have a grasses budget, decorative grasses.
No, it would come out of what we use for trees currently.
Hold on, it would come out of the tree budget?
Correct.
Okay, so it would be operational, so this is irrelevant. Is that what I'm understanding?
Correct.
Okay, next page.
Wait, I got a, hang on.
Any question?
So, are we, are we going to talk, are we going to do the 75,000, or we're just going to skip it?
From what I understand, oh, go ahead, Jeff.
Yeah, I think that safest course is, we're going to try to take some amount out of the operational budget, but I think it's probably a safe play to lower this number as a little buffer, just in case we need some more money for additional trees or grasses, so...
So, are we, are we gonna, so we're not going to vote on this?
No, I would vote on that, and just bring the number down to something more reasonable, like, let's say 25,000.
And, since you didn't recognize me, I'm just going to go ahead.
Oh, go ahead, Alderman Roy Wesley.
You said about doing it in-house. So, our city staff is going to plant these trees? I mean, last month, we, I, we approved a bill for 500 for one tree, for a service.
Go ahead, Jeff.
But I mean, in-house, we're not going to utilize HR Green's landscaping plan, we're going to use this as part of our tree plan, which, yeah, we outsource our tree plan, but what I mean is, we're not going to do the HR Green landscape plan.
We can do our own plan.
Okay, so we're not, good? I just have to...
I don't think our guys are going to go plant the tree.
Well, it's not that hard to put an auger on a bobcat and...
Alderman Woods, and then move on.
Yeah, I mean, my concept is, let's look at what we're going to do there. First, develop an idea, and then we can just add to Ken's, the Public Works budget if we had to.
Film that.
If we got a little more excessive, we don't even know what we're talking about, so, we might, we might be well off figuring out what it is, adding 7,500 to Ken's budget later, or something, if we had to do it.
Jeff, I think you were saying that there should be, should there be something budgeted?
Maybe there could be some wiggle room of 25,000 here, or we can just, in time for the budget, do an expanded level item to that line item for a lot of...
Okay, why don't we do that? We'll do an expanded level item on the budget. Okay, we're going to move forward, guys. Page fifty-eight, Irving Park Road beautification. Any questions there?
Sorry.
Left, right, good. Page fifty-nine, community park at the Town Center. Any questions? Page sixty, Ash Street ComEd Transformer relocation, irrelevant, we'll be looking at that down the road, or developer will. Page sixty-one, South Treatment Plant Facility Maintenance. No questions there? Oh, Mayor, go ahead.[1560.12]
On the maintenance, I, I know we looked at some stuff when we were checking all the options. I mean, have we addressed, like, the safety concerns? Is that all addressed already? There was, you know, fencing and certain, I forget, the study we had that gave us the options of, should we go with Edison, should we look at doing our own, and it pointed out a few problems there were at the plant, some, I think, kind of safety issues. We did address that already? Or is that gonna be in the budget?
Jeff?
I've gotta talk with Brad Kittleson and Matt on that. Matt kinda got flu at the last second, so I don't have a lot of good answers on that.
Well, I just wanna make sure, if we do have safety issues, that's gotta be funded. And, and, and they could, they were minor, they weren't huge, but some fencing and steps or something, I, I forget, and I don't have it in front of me. Something, this stuff should be addressed.
Brad, do you have that noted, or Jeff?
Yeah, I noted.
Got it. Any other questions on that? Okay, we're gonna move on to page sixty-two. I'm sorry, go ahead, I didn't see you.
I'm for some, a treatment plant, what is required, what's the state gave us deadline? Or did they not do the deadline, and we have to have that up to the scanner, or the fob zone to move over anything? Did that come out there at all?
I know they were talking about that.
Yeah.
Oh, Brad?
Yeah, I just, I was actually speaking to somebody yesterday, or two days ago, at the treatment plant about the phosphorus limits, and they said our current permit does not have a phosphorus limit, so they haven't released one yet. Everybody's anticipating that there will be one, but as of thirty-six hours ago, there wasn't one imposed on us yet.
Okay, any, any comments? Okay. Page sixty-two, the Deer Path and Route eighty-three sanitary sewer loop. Any questions on that? Good. Page sixty-three, the Irving Park Road Water Main Replacement. Alderman Sizmarzki?
Yeah, I know we've been over this before, Jeff. We need a, we wanna number for the age of that pipe that were put in.
Jeff?
I think it was thirty, thirty years, if I'm not mistaken.
Uh, we've got, I don't think there's an exact year. I thought it was a ballpark year, and we've also been monitoring the break schedule on Irving Park Road, and it's not as many as you would think. So I could distribute our break schedule, our break log, and the manager's report, but it's been fewer than you would think. We did have, what's, what sparked this conversation to begin with is, we had a slew of breaks in a short time period about five years ago, and then it's been curtailed since. But I'll circulate that.
All right, thanks.
Do you, go ahead, Alderman Eugene. What are you doing there?
I'm sorry, Alderman Eugene Wesley?
I, I have the output.
Okay. Anybody else? Alderman Catalano?
Yes, as far as water main break, do we have a, a type of a policy right now? How many breaks, that, you know, when the mains break so many times, I mean, when do we replace them, or, because of, go ahead.
Yeah, typically, I don't think there's a, a set policy for exact number. It's more when it becomes excessive or obvious, or it's just, it's obvious in reality, and, and then we would make an adjustment to, to go ahead and do it. I think I know the one you're talking about, and it was definitely not obvious or excessive for the numbers we were talking about.
Thanks.
Mayor?
Yeah, we had some obvious ones, I believe with Cedar and Montrose, where we had almost, it was either eight or ten breaks within less than a year. That was.
And we fixed it.
Yeah, that was.
Okay. Alderman Sizmarzki?
Yeah, I mean, if you, to be, like you said, the policy, we can't set policy on that, even brand-new water mains break, so, I mean, it, just 'cause you put a water main, doesn't mean you're gonna get thirty years out of it without one break, that happened. I mean, kinda can attest to that, correct?
Good. Okay. Page sixty-four, the replacement of Water Tower One. Any questions on that? I would note that I guess we, the comment was, we'd see how the TIF progresses, to see if that's something we can discuss later. Okay. So that's the final one, however, I, I did have a request to see if we, and I, I'd like to take a, maybe a roll call, to see if people would be willing to talk about the Park District, to see if we are willing to at least have a discussion around the funding percent. So I would ask Eileen if you could take a formal roll call on whether folks would be ready, yea or nay tonight, to make that decision on the percentage, or have that discussion period. We are in favor, but we're trying to see if we can, there was a request to see if we can have a discussion through a little, how to schedule on the percent. Can you take a roll call, Eileen?
Alderman Roy Wesley?
The question is, are folks open, being that we are now complete, essentially, we wanted to add this final piece? Are you ready tonight to discuss a funding percent, or funding contribution percent? The Park District has asked for fifty percent. So I just wanted to see if it's people, if people are ready tonight to talk about it, or if we defer it. Before the roll call, I guess, Jeff, go ahead.
Yeah, just a couple things. Backtracking first out of the unfunded items, the unfunded items that are going to be a reality, that we're going to have to spend some money on, whether it be debt service or whatnot, would be, I'm not saying new, new public works building, maybe there's another option when we have our planning session, but there's going to be money plugged in to funded for something to do with public works. And additionally, there's going to be money plugged in from unfunded for.
The ComEd?
Yeah, the ComEd project, the ComEd Stormwater project.
Right.
So, those are big-ticket items, and those will chew up a big chunk of that money you have sitting there that's left over right now. So, don't fool yourselves and think we, we've got a ton of money. Those are big-ticket projects, and those aren't gonna be able to be ignored.
So, just to be clear, that's the reserve money of the, is it eight hundred or six hundred thousand?
That's just, in the out years, we have that big cash flow right now that looks like a big cash flow, but in reality, once we get the clearer picture from ComEd, and once we get a clearer picture of our public work strategy, those are hundreds of thousands of dollars each year that are gonna get plugged back in.
Right, right. Okay.
Also, the, the last thing, the Joint Park District City Committee recommended up to a fifty percent cost share.
Up to a fifty percent, okay. Which, this, this roll call is not gonna be to vote on that, it's simply to have further discussion, to see if we can come to a motion. Alderman Woods?
Well, as I said, maybe we could add some numbers to the vote before we entertain it, because we, as Alderman Roy Wesley, you know, agree, we kinda already all agreed that we do wanna move forward, so.
Kind, you wanna put.
In my mind, yeah, so in my mind, and, and being on that committee, and, and talking to Matt, and seeing the presentation that we've seen, and knowing where they're at, I, I believe if, if it's left up to the Park District, it'll take them somewhere to complete the whole project, seven to ten years, depending on funding sources and other projects. So, our commitment before, when they originally came, was to help them to bring it to the city faster, to have that. So, right now, I would say we'd have to look, if we wanted to complete the whole, what is projected to be four million, we don't know it, because that includes all kinds of things that, we don't know that we're even gonna do, but I'll throw out a number of, you know, six hundred and fifty thousand a year for three years, just as a way of, for something.
Starting the conversation.
To start the conversation. So maybe, at the end, maybe we only do the one year, or whatever, that helps them with the, the building, or whatever, but if you look at that number that they're looking for, and divide it up in a reasonable amount of time, that's kinda.
That's one point nine five?
Yeah, so that, that, that gets pretty darn close to the two million.
That's an amazing sales tactic you did there, by splitting it up into three. You're hired. Now.
I gotta watch the tree planting on Potter Street.
And the coffee budget back there. Okay, so we have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
You have a second? Okay, questions? Alderman Sizmarzki?
Actually, I'd like, to change the motion to change that to five, five and a half thousand, and.
Five hundred and fifty?
Or five hundred and fifty, and put the other remaining part of that, six fifty, towards the central, a lot of people are asking, there's no kids swings there, they like the park and all, but they would like to see it finished, and if it could get done faster, that's two projects, that one's done, and the other one can move along.
Would the petitioner be willing to, to that cost?
Two, I, I just wanted to make a comment. So part of the, I don't, I don't think that we're actually committing to hand them a check tonight for six fifty, but.
Sounds better.
They, they need to know that we're gonna partner in at kind of what level, so that they can start fine-tuning those numbers. Matt, would you say that that's a fair assessment, so that then we can determine, is it, you know, is the shortfall one eight seven five, or, or is it two five? And then we can fine-tune those numbers, but they really need to know if they have a partner out there, and within reason what level they're gonna commit to.
So there's a motion.
So we might not spend the six fifty.
So is there, is your motion to commit over three years, six fifty over three years, is that your motion, or is your motion, or are you willing to amend your motion to five fifty a year for three years, over, which equates to one point six five?
I'd like to keep it at the six fifty, and see what savings we can bring through. Like I said, we might not carry through three years.
Okay, okay.
We might not.
Sure. So, we have a current motion on the floor. Mayor?
Right. Regarding the six fifty, the goal is to get that, number one, that cabin down, the new building up, getting Edge Adventures up and running, and cleaning up the area. It could be three years, I mean, during the committee meetings, it's possible it might even be four years, so that number of six fifty could be diluted, because Park District only so far committed one point five, so it's still a shortfall, right? I, I believe. So it could be a four-year project versus a three-year project. But the goal is to get the, the building up the first year. Is that correct? Yes?
Sorry, go ahead, Matt.
Um, yeah, the goal would be to initially get the infrastructure for Edge Adventures, the building, parking, and those components completed. Right now, we estimate about one point five million from the bond issue, and we believe we can contribute about two hundred and fifty thousand out of our CIP in the fiscal year that'll start May one. And obviously, some direction from the council on where your commitment will be, will help us in our planning to get the steps and processes going that we ultimately have to come back to you for approval anyway, through a PUD.
Okay, any other questions for Matt while he's up there? Okay, Alderman Sorrentino?
You know, I'm all in favor of helping the Park District, of course. However, we originally voted on philosophically agreeing to partner with them. Now, we've been here for four hours, and went through eighteen million dollars. I would just ask if we, as a council, could perhaps discuss this with a, a fresher mind before we commit to dollars, and look at an ROI on our end before we make a firm commitment.
Do we have a motion, or no?
There is a motion.
Go ahead, Alderman Woods?
Yeah. I mean, this isn't a hard commitment. We can still, I mean, we're still gonna talk about this again, and then it's still gotta get put in the budget. So, this is far from it. This is just the starting point of what we're talking about. What does that look like? Because if it's two hundred thousand, maybe that doesn't.
Right.
Make anything work.
I mean, I mean, if you, sorry, just doing the fast math, right? I, I explained my, my piece of it, right? I have residents that, I, I am not gonna be able to look them in the face and say, we used your tax dollars, even though you pay in the Benson Park Districts. We took your tax dollars and used them for this facility. Can't do that. But I will support it, and, and that's where, for the sake of tonight, I don't know if I can make that commitment, because to me, I say not fifty, I say thirty, which I break down to four fifty-five over three years. That, to me, is a little digestible. But I think, is there, are we looking for like a plateau of saying, like, we're, we're like totally out, out of bounds? We're, is that?
Well.
We just need to, are we trying to debate percentages?
This is the starting point. We're gonna debate this document one more time.
When we go.
And then that's gotta go to the budget.
Yep.
And we gotta debate it in the budget. So.
Yeah.
I don't know what that number is. I just, for simple math, to get the ball rolling, took roughly two million dollars, divided it by three years, which is a reasonable amount of time to get the, the, the project put together, and came up with another. We, we can make that smaller, we can.
It's a discretionary number that will be talked about multiple times.
It could be declining, it could be six fifty-five, four, whatever.
Okay, so Alderman Eugene Wesley?
There was a couple of questions that we asked Matt to go back and, and look at.
Believe me, I'm in favor of helping get this program off the board, but I would like those answers given back to us before.
So, so why don't we do that? So we.
I mean, that's, that's my thing. Yeah, no, that's fine.
So we, we were gonna have a roll call on, or, yeah, we were gonna do a roll call on whether we wanted to discuss what a percentage was. But we did, we did have a motion on the floor by Alderman Woods, which, which was to basically allocate, essentially, the fifty percent, five fifty, excuse me, six fifty over three years, equating to one point nine five million, which is about fifty percent funded. Is there a second?
There was a second.
There was a second. Can we take a roll call on that vote first, and then we'll take a different roll call if that fails? Correct? Okay.
Alderman Roy Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Sorrentino?
No.
Alderman Jacob?
Stay.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
No.
Alderman Catalano?
No.
Alderman Sizmarzki?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
No.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
So, have a question.
You have another motion?
Okay, did, I'm trying to see if that failed.
It failed.
It failed, okay. Alderman Roy Wesley?
So now you just brought up about, are we gonna help them fund it or not? Are we just gonna sit here and wait for the, are we gonna wait till Matt comes back with the questions and re, redo it? We could sit up here and spend one point six million dollars on a clock tower.
Well, I don't, I don't think, I think what Alderman Sorrentino was saying is that we need a fresh mind, right? So there's questions that he's gotta get answers for. We need to kinda reset ourselves and refresh, and maybe take a deeper dive into this ourselves, after getting some of that great presentation, and then bringing this back in a few weeks, it sounds like. Two weeks, bring it back in two weeks. Is that enough time for you, Matt, to get some of those answers that posed?
Sure, I, it'd be great if I could get the questions in writing, and we can definitely work towards the answers. And, you know, we'll continue to progress and move forward with our planning regardless, and we respect the fact that, you know, there's a lot here for you to digest and make ultimate decisions on.
I think the positives, you know, there's support. We just need to figure out what that looks like, and, and be smart about freshness about when we make that decision, it sounds like. But we'll take a formal vote on that. Jeff?
Just, Brad and I just kinda spoke real quick, just so we're not, I just wanna remember correctly the questions. I, I didn't think there were that many. It was more of a, a resident, a Wooddale resident component question about their usage, and additionally, the Edge Adventures financials and, and profit numbers.
Yeah, so maybe, so maybe could you, are you guys open to just submit them to Jeff?
Huge questions.
I'm ready. I already got the questions for you.
Yeah, he'll give them after the.
He'll give them to you after the meeting.
Those are the two major questions that I remember, though.
Jeff, is that okay?
Yeah, sure. Questions.
Okay, if you have any questions, just submit them to Jeff afterwards, and then he can get them together and get them to Matt. We'll get everything back in writing. We'll bring it back up for two weeks from now. Do your homework, read up, come fresh, and we'll, we'll make that decision. Is there a motion? Alderman Sorrentino, would, would you like to make the formal motion to?
I make the motion.
Making a future item? Do we have to make a motion, or, just bring it as a future item? Do we have to make a motion?
We've got a, we've got a, a good meeting on January twenty-fifth, where that can squeeze right in there. There's not too much on the docket that day.
On the twenty-fifth, okay. Done, done, we're good, no motion. Okay. All right, Alderman Woods?
Yeah, just one closing comment or food for thought, as we're thinking about this project. And I understand all the other issues surrounding it, but we gotta look back to when Top Golf first came into town, and nobody thought that that was gonna be a viable entity when it came in. And it became the linchpin, it became the cornerstone of Wooddale, became the thing that put Wooddale on the map. And that's how I view this partnership with the Park District and getting that group in here to put that amenity together, to have something to, to draw. I think it's really important. I don't know if the number's six fifty, I know that there's other things to look at. I'm just saying that we really need to take a hard look at it, because it will be a big thing for the city. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Jeff, you have a direction you need? Okay, I don't know, are there any closing comments, Brad, that you have on the CIP?
Need a motion to approve as an amendment.
I will, I just wanna see if there's any questions, or any final comments from you?
No.
Okay. Is there a motion? I didn't know if you had anything, okay. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
The amend.
CIP of amendment changes that we have made.
Second.
Second? Okay, Alderman Sizmarzki's your second. Can you do a formal roll call, Eileen?
Alderman Roy Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarzki?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
Great, and that passes. Before you get out of your seats, items to be considered at future meetings. A, master fee schedule on February eighth, fiscal year two thousand nineteen budget. Mark your calendars, February twenty-second. Good. Anything else?
I make a motion adjourned.
All right, I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting adjourned. Later than I.